I will call the meeting to order at 7:18. Roll call, all members still present, the exception of Ms. Skamerski. I'm gonna ask for the waiving of the Pledge of Allegiance since we did it just a little bit ago. Student Council, there's no Student Council yet, we'll have that in the fall. And then we have the draft minutes for June 22nd, 2021. Questions or comments or revisions on the minutes? If not, need a motion to approve the minutes. John, second, Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. Now we'll move to the, our first board forum. As always, we have a second board forum later in the, towards the end of the meeting. We're up to me for board members to bring up any discussions or agenda items they'd like to bring forward. So I'll start on my right with Frank, anything Frank? Nope. Joanne? Good. Just make sure if you don't have a microphone to grab one if you're gonna say something. So Kathleen, you're good? Okay. Deanna? Good. Mark? Board form? Anything? Good. John?
Good.
And Cheryl? You're good. Okay. Now moving to the public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District, they address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wish to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for their record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of our business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited. It will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No? And I don't see anybody here from the public, seats of administrators. All right. If there's no public forum comments, we'll then move, we'll close that and move to reports and presentations to superintendent schools. Mr. Simons?
I have no formal presentations other than the discussion items.
Okay. We'll now move on to our item eight on the board agenda tonight. Summer school opening and updates from, from Mr. Simons.
Yes, I just wanted to share with the board that the opening of all of our summer school programs has gone very successfully. We've had to make sure that the, the transition of the students back into school for the summer has gone well. I'm gonna ask Mr. McHugh to talk a little bit about some of the experiences of the students and the staff thus far. Our elementary and K-8 programs started first along with our, our extended school year program for our students with disabilities. And our high school kids came in this week and everything has gone very, very smoothly thanks to the onsite administrators as well as Mr. McHugh and all the planning. Mr. McHugh?
Thank you, Mr. Simons. This is the start of week two for our K-8 Elevate program and our 12-month extended school year program. We have over 600 students in the building here at Columbia High School. Starting this week, our high school program, our summer enrichment program, and our Apex Credit Recovery Program started this week. We do have some of our students in nine through 12 participating in a full remote credit recovery program through Questar. Things have gone really well. It is a parent drop-off and pickup for our K-8 Elevate program for the most part. We've tried on a case-by-case basis to arrange transportation for families that needed that transportation. But the first day of summer school with about 200 parents dropping their children off, the thunder and lightning started and the rain started coming down right at the AM arrival. So it was really impressive to see our people step up. So they were problem solvers, they got out there and got the kids into the building safely, and we've gotten better. We're in and out of the Columbia parking lot in about 12 minutes. So things have gotten better. We have a school social worker that's doing a universal approach to student wellness. She's pushing into the classroom, into all of the classrooms. We also have Alyssa Evans, who's our student assistance counselor through the Rensselaer County Department of Mental Health Services. She's going to start pushing into our classrooms as well, starting next week. But things are going really well. Teachers took a unique approach, there's some thematic approaches. They're studying ocean animals and there are some, you know, universal kind of topics that all the classrooms are studying. So they are working on reading fluency and reading informational text and decoding skills, whatever's appropriate at that grade level. They are using the Critical Concepts Document. It's a collaborative approach on Mondays. They are collaborating with other teachers from other districts that are also working in summer school in their home district. So things have gone really well and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback.
From parents as well, Jim? Parents?
Parents seem happy, you know? And we had some students that did not register but showed up on day one and we accommodated every family that wanted to join, so.
Great, great. Thank you. Any questions for Jim? All right. Next item is the updates, if any, on the state school opening guidance?
Yes, I don't have a lot of information on this because we have not received any new guidance for September. We did receive guidance last week regarding the mask policy and the ability of districts to choose either to follow the existing K-12 school guidance or to adapt mask policies to follow the summer camp guidance. Superintendent's in the area, administrators met with each other with help from Questar BOCs to interpret the guidance. We tried to interpret that guidance consistently and made a determination here with input from Jim, McHugh, Molly McGrath, Tom Brunell, and others that the best approach would be to have kids and staff as they're transitioning into the building, have their masks on, and once seated in the classroom, they can remove the mask during the entire instructional time. And it seems to be working very well and everyone's cooperating with that. And we've had no, no concerns or complaints communicated to us from any, anybody. One thing that did came up, come about right before this meeting, I got an email from, received an email from Dr. Cruz, District Superintendent from Questar BOCs. You may recall that we had a forum in the spring to advocate for the guidance to come sooner than later. The legislators in our area that represent districts within the four BOCs region sent a letter to Commissioner Zucker today encouraging him to release the guidance as soon as possible because schools needed to plan. So our legislators have, both our senators and Assembly representatives from all of the districts in the four BOCs regions sent the correspondence to Dr. Zucker today. So hopefully that may prompt us to get the guidance released so that we can prepare for September very soon.
And I think we can remember from our forum that the commissioner did also, was gonna work together with the Department of Health and Governor's Office to expedite and get that as soon as possible. I think last year, the guidance came out around July 17th or so?
That's correct.
So. Let's see if they hold true to form. Any questions regarding updated guidance or reopening? Okay. The next item for discussion is the East Greenwood Central School District Districtwide Safety Plan for 2122. Mr. Jeff Tuckert is here to talk about any of the updates and changes. This is a discussion item only, it will have to be posted for 30 days and then it'll come to the board once that public notice period is over. So Mr. Tuckert?
Thank you. For the agreement in there, if people haven't seen it before, it's, I think it's our fifth time that we've had to do this. Page 11 has one addition for this year, it has the pandemic plan. Now, we currently are not under that state of emergency. That was, that was suspended about three weeks ago, give or take. So that part's not technically active, but it has to be part of our plan. So we may get questions on that. Remember, this gets posted on the website tomorrow. Mr. Adams is gonna link last year's code of conduct and he's gonna link the pandemic plan to it. But the pandemic plan is not currently in effect until a state of emergency is declared. So I think he's gonna put a blurb on there. Because it says stuff about masks and social distancing and things like that, even though the summer school stuff is different. So we'll make sure that that's on there, so there's no confusion. I don't think in the five years we've ever had anybody comment. I don't think anybody's ever typed anything in. We've waited the 30 days. So looking at your schedule there, I believe this has to be approved on August 25th. So I'll be back on the 25th and I know Mr. Adams will take any comments and then they have to be read and discussed, but in five years we haven't had any, which is good. Remember, the plan is just an overview, it's not the actual 110 pages per building. You all have access to that, if you need it, let me know. But it's there, that way we can get it done before school starts and then we can work on the individual building plans as we go, return to school in September. So I'll make sure that he puts a blurb on there so we don't get bombarded with emails saying, oh, we said one thing and another, we don't want that, I know. But that does have to be on there. The only thing that won't be on there as well is the SRO agreements because those are still technically active until the end of August. That's how they are, they don't take effect again until September. So the one between East Green Bush Police, the one between Rensselaer County Sheriffs are still active, so those will be new when you approve those in September. Nobody ever asked about those either, but they're in there. So do you guys have any questions for, for me on that? But we just wanna make sure that we went over that little part there. So we don't want any confusion on tomorrow morning and get bombarded with emails. Not me, you, but, all right? Thank you, Mr. Bino.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckert. Mr. Simons?
That's it.
Okay. With that, that closes our discussion items. We will now move to, we have several items for item nine, regular business. The first, item A, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments regarding that item? Need a motion to approve then? Frank, second, Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. We have a sheltering agreement with the American Red Cross. Any explanation needed, Linda?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bino. This is an agreement that we have had in place with the American Red Cross since April of 2003. It has, was last updated in December of 2009. So this is basically just an update of contact information, emails, phone numbers, that sort of thing. And this agreement is that in the event, Red Cross, in the event of emergency, Red Cross, we agree that they'll use our, our premises as shelters. That will take place with consultation between the Red Cross and administration here in the district. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Linda. Seeing no questions for Linda, we need a motion to approve the sheltering agreement. Mark, second, Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. So we have several items on regular business that regarding establishment of positions. The first position is the school counselor position. Any comments or questions regarding the school counselor position? No? Need a motion to approve that? Frank, second, Joanne, all those in favor? All those opposed? Approved. Did you have something, Linda? I heard you kinda like flagged me down.
We missed the elevator, bid for the elevator.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's come back to the, yep, okay. Let's go to, back to item C, I'm sorry. We have bid results for the elevator maintenance. Linda, any comments regarding that? Or Paul, I see Paul's here as well.
We, we posted in the paper on June 2nd for the elevator bid and we had two replies on June 16th, we opened the bid. They were very close, you'll see that they're only slightly over $100 apart on the annual maintenance. So Paul Bickel, our facilities director, also attached a sheet for your review that basically took our, our maintenance, our labor, repair labor hours for this year and used the rates that they are proposing in their bids. And it really comes out to be that McGee Elevator is the contractor that we are recommending.
Any questions regarding the elevator bid? Need a motion to approve the acceptance of the bid? John, second. Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved. So I did item D and item E is the science teacher. The science teacher position will be assigned to the CTAP program. Any questions or comments regarding that? Need a motion to approve that position? Deanna, second, Kathleen, all those in favor? The next item is the approval of several teaching assistants establishing. The breakdown is on the memo, seven teaching assistant positions. .5 at Belltop, 1.0, Janay, Green Meadow, and Goff, and CHS. And a lot of these positions are related to IEP needs and things like that, correct? Okay. Any questions or comments regarding the teaching assistant positions? I need a motion to approve the TA positions. Joanne, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? The next item is when we talked about regarding the elementary positions, early intervention specialists. We had a lot of conversation about this. On the memo indicates the number of 10 1.0 K-3 teachers. Any questions or comments on those? Need a motion to approve the K-3 teachers? Kathleen, second, John, all those in favor? All those opposed? The next item, just let me scroll back. Social studies, part-time position. Point two at the high school. Any questions or comments? Motion to approve that social studies position? Joanne, second. Deanna, all those in favor? All those opposed? Now moving to the establishment of the elementary AIS teachers. According to memo, we have 2.5 FTE elementary reading teachers. Is that correct? 2.5. Okay. Any questions on those? Need a motion to approve that? Frank, second. Deanna, all those in favor? All those opposed? Now move to the establishment of the middle school AIS. 1.7 FTEs AIS, all right, at the middle school to support mathematics and other areas. Any questions on the middle school positions? Need a motion to approve those? Deanna, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? All those opposed? We now have a elementary teacher position. And this will be located at Howard L. Goff, I assume it's teaching in the sixth grade. Any questions on, on that? Need a motion to approve the elementary position? John, second, Frank, all those in favor? All any opposed? Approved. The next position is the RTI coordinator. We talked quite a bit about this support position, working closely with Mr. McHugh, right, Mr. McHugh? In terms of the data and the needs that we have for the district. Any questions on the RTI position? Seeing none, need a motion to approve the RTI? Joanne, second, Kathleen, all those in favor? All those opposed? Approved. And our last position to be established is the school social worker, which will act as a student and family engagement specialist. We had a lot of discussion about this and the role that that person would play in terms of supporting our return to school for our students. Any questions on the student and family engagement specialist? Seeing none, need a motion to approve that? John, second, Frank, all those in favor? Any opposed? Approved. I think we got through all our positions. Yes, A through M, okay. Moving on to the next item is the committee report. So I just wanna say, Marissa, good luck with the postings and establish the positions now and to filling those vacancies.
Thank you, Mr. Bino.
Okay. Committee reports. Marissa?
I have none at this time.
Nothing? Linda?
I have none at this time.
None at this time? Jim, anything? Okay, thank you. And Mr. Simons?
Only a reminder to those board members that are members of BRAC, the BRAC Committee will be meeting Monday evening at 6 o'clock in the boardroom at the central administration. And we will be discussing a number of issues related to our facilities, including long-range planning for continued repairs and renovations that we're identifying may be necessary.
What's the date on that, Jim?
It's 6 o'clock on the 16th, which I believe is the 16th, Monday, 6 o'clock. Is that correct?
The 19th.
19th, excuse me, 19th.
Who, who on the board participates in that?
I think it's Joanne.
Joanne.
And Cheryl. And Mark is an alternate.
And Mark, okay. I mean, I may, if I have time, I may attend that too. I think there's some pretty extensive discussions talking about facilities and the items you shared with us, so.
Yes.
Yeah. 6:00 PM, okay. Table motions, I have none. And then all business, board members, anything? I don't have anything, okay. We'll move to our consent agenda. Items A through H on the consent agenda, any questions or comments? Discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none? Need a motion to approve by consent, items A through H? Joanne, I need a second. Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. Do we have any addendums, Mr. Simons?
No, we do not.
Okay, very good. New business, board members, any, any new business you'd like to bring forward? Mark?
No, it's not new business.
Yes. Question generally?
I can wait for form.
Any other, anyone else, new business? No? Okay. Moving to item 16 on our agenda, public forum number two. Anyone from the public would like to speak? Yes, sir. See, you have your, your hand raised? Just make sure you have a microphone because we are live streaming it, so anyone hear it? And then just, if you could, just identify yourself and your affiliation with the district. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Hanford. I have a child entering kindergarten in the fall and a child that'll be entering second grade at Belltop. I just wanted to go on the record, is just making a request when the plans are being made for the safety for the fall, not to make an across-the-board decision for the masking policy for the school. Any of the kids in high school, by the time fall started, will have the chance to have been vaccinated if they or their parents have agreed to it. The elementary kids, obviously under 12, none of them have had that chance yet. So I just, you know, I would please ask if the mask mandate's gonna be removed from the elementary children to put it off until after Christmas break, until at that point, they've most likely had a chance to be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming this evening and expressing your views. Anyone else, public forum? Seeing none, we'll move to the board forum and we'll start with our newest board member, Cheryl. Any, any comments or questions? No comments? John?
Oh, yeah.
Might need a mark, okay, John?
First of all, I'd like to welcome Cheryl to the board. Thank you for joining this wonderful team of people. Frank, congratulations, you're in for another round. And Joanne and myself, it's been a really great experience this year in the sense that we watched the community come together. And I would like to thank the public, the parents, the students, and the taxpayers of this community for their support of this board and this district and our administrative team in trying to keep up with the craziness of the last 17 months. And it's been a work in progress. And a lot of times, it's frustrating for us when we see the governor's press conferences and then the paperwork doesn't catch up for a couple of weeks. So thanks to the public and our administrative team for trying to keep this as current as possible. And I wanna thank the administration for really addressing the concerns that the board had throughout this pandemic and also for the, for the next school year. Tonight was very instrumental in trying to rebuild what has been lost in the last 17 months. So I really appreciate the support that this team of people came together in the best interest of our students. We have a lot of work to do and there's gonna be a lot of changes as we come through this process. And I only ask that the public and the rest of the community, just be patient and communicate with us and attend the meetings and really let us know how you're feeling. And I think that's really important. So again, I'm looking forward to the future next year. And it was interesting, I, I had a difficult day today and I was, you know how you kinda get into that zone where you're not really feeling it? But when I came in here and I saw the kids painting on the bridge today and it said, "Think of something positive." And I'm really glad to be here today to review our agenda and think of the positive things that are gonna come for us. So as we go through this, let us all remember before we say something negative or not supportive of what we're trying to do, and this goes for all of us and the community, think of something positive. That's the message from our children telling us that. So I thought that was pretty powerful. So thanks for listening, folks. I'm gonna turn it over to somebody else.
Thank you, John. Mark?
Just a couple reminders that usually, at the end of the school, we usually get three reports from you.
Yes.
Vader, but it's not called Vader anymore. The tardy, and then the staff absentees versus the subs.
I know that Marissa is working on the Vader report right now. We actually discussed that this morning at our administrators' meeting and the others are in process right now. So we do plan to provide those reports to the board.
Okay. And the only other question I saw at the BRAC meeting, remember a while ago, we had the architect and he prepared this nice study for us of all our fields and all our sporting complex?
Yes.
Is, is, is that report gonna be brought back out?
We brought it back out at the last BRAC meeting, but we can do it again. We, that is part of some of the information that we wanna utilize to craft our next referendum, yes. So those, that field utilization study, that master plan for athletics is part of what we wanna do and try to build into some of the other issues that we need to address. And we certainly can include it as a topic. We had a remote meeting and we had Mike Leonard talk a little bit about it and Paul Bickel and our architect, just to kinda lay the groundwork for some of the coaches. And they were involved in the last meeting, but we certainly will make that part of the conversation.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Deanna? Good. Kathleen is good, good. Joanne, good. Frank, anything? Good. You know, Mark bringing that up reminds me of something I wanted to talk to the board about. I'd like to see, and maybe Linda, you have this, or Mr. Simons, really kind of a list of that, kind of things that we would expect in terms of like, I guess we call it activity calendar, or the calendar would list basically the items that we would get during the school year, during the board meetings. So we can kind of anticipate and see, okay, like the, the thing that's not called Vader anymore, but the, the reporting and the different cycle of reports and the different things we have to be aware of on a different cycle throughout the, the year. And that way, we can kind of anticipate and know that those are coming on board two months from now, even start giving some suggestions or ideas or participate in, in those. And I know that's something probably we have that, we can maybe make part of the general calendar for board members and the public to see what's upcoming. So that would be helpful. I just wanna echo John Dunn's comments. It's been a pleasure working with this board. I think being back in person will mean a lot to us in terms of the conversation and the ability to talk through the needs of our school community, to hear from our school community, hear from our, our staff, get out to the buildings if possible and reestablish that positive routine in anticipation of school reopening in a way that I think is benefits all of our, our students and families and our staff in a safe and welcoming environment. We've, we've dedicated, as you see, the community should see that we've, we are anticipating the needs that are gonna be out there for our children and families and our staff. And I think this is an important first step to make sure that when we get that guidance, we are gonna address those needs and, and make sure our, our kids and families are taken care of and get every opportunity to, to bridge any gaps they might have, come back strong and welcome back to our, our schools and have a, a great school opening. So really celebratory time, hopefully to, to get back to school. So that's my comments. With that, we do have need for an executive session, for a brief executive session and discussion on the personnel items. So we have no board business after the executive session. So with that, I'm gonna welcome, thank you for coming and, and for our first board meeting of the fiscal year. And I need a motion to move into executive session. Kathleen, second. Frank, all those in favor? Frank, all those in favor? All right. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate you coming tonight and, uh, have a great evening.